Right.
I was just gonna take about thirty seconds.
Yeah, okay. Okay. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Natrona County Planning and Zoning Commission for December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three. Hope everyone has gotten a copy of the agenda. I believe it's no agenda? Okay, well, the official agenda has us doing the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we're going directly into an executive session that I'll tell you more about. So I'm giving you a lay of the land. We should be gone ten minutes, maybe a little bit more. So I didn't want you to feel disappointed to show up and then have to wait ten minutes for us, or ten minutes plus for us to do our business back here, but that's what it is. So that's a little preamble to what we're talking about. Everybody please rise, and we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the Wisheslands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So folks, I'm gonna hold off on the, on the introducing everyone and the rules for our meeting. It's my understanding that there's a matter that needs to discuss in executive session pursuant to a matter considered confidential by law. The Chair would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
Second the motion?
Throw move.
Okay. Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
We'll be back as quickly as we can. of the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes. The Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of that.
I move to approve the minutes from October ten meeting.
I second the motion. We have a motion and a second to approve the October tenth, two thousand twenty-three Natrona County Planning and Zoning Meeting Minutes as prepared. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, three to zero. Next on the agenda is consideration of MS twenty-three dash three. And that is a request by Carl and Vicky Nelson for approval of a vacation and replat for the C V Nelson addition, a major subdivision consisting of two lots on a parcel of approximately two point two acres in the urban residential zoning district. The parcel is located at Lot Ten, Westland Park Number Two, and Lot Two, Bunner Simple Subdivision. The property is currently accessed from Cabin Creek Road. Okay. Everyone should be aware that this matter was sent back to the Board of County Commissioners for rehearing after it was determined a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission had previously, had a previously undisclosed disclosed conflict. So the matter is being reheared by the Planning and Zoning Commission and will begin with a fresh start. So it's like everything that happened last time, we're starting afresh, as if it didn't happen. So with that in mind, Kristi, may we have a staff report? Please.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. Again, this is case MS twenty-three dash three. The agent is through CEPI. The request is by Carl and Vicky Nelson for a vacation and replat of the C V Nelson addition, which consists of two lots on a parcel approximately two point two acres in the urban residential district. The legal description currently Lot Ten, Westland Park Number Two, and Lot Two, Bunner Simple Subdivision. The property is located on that south side of State Highway twenty-two, south of the intersection of Highway twenty-two and Cabin Creek Road. That would be about five hundred and seventy-five feet west of the Highway twenty-two and Robinson Road intersection. It is addressed at forty-two sixty Cabin Creek Road. The zoning for this is urban residential, and the minimum lot size within that zone is nine thousand square feet with public sewer and two acres with a private sewer. The property again is currently subdivided, but the lots are in those two different subdivisions. That Lot One is in Westland Park, and Lot, Proposed Lot Two is Lot Two of Bunner Simple. Proposed Lot One currently has a shop on the property, and Lot Two is undeveloped. The adjacent land uses are all similar zoned U R zoning. The water and wastewater sources are through Skyline Ranches and Westland Park. These are the divided ISDs. So Proposed Lot One is within Skyline Ranches. Proposed Lot Two is in Westland Park. So we have nine criteria to cover for a subdivision. The first one is whether or not it's consistent with the Natrona County Development Plan and the Natrona County Zoning Resolution. The proposed C V Nelson addition major subdivision dimensions are in compliance with the two thousand twenty-two zoning resolution. The zoning is that urban residential, which in this area with the ISDs, has a nine thousand square foot minimum when connected. All lots in the proposed subdivision are over that minimum requirement. The intent and purpose for the urban residential area is to establish and protect medium-to-high-density residential neighborhoods. Proposed Lot One does currently have that dry shop constructed on it. In two thousand and twelve, the building permit applicant received a zoning certificate from the planning department, and a building permit, B twelve, one forty-eight, was approved and issued. Generally, the two thousand and the two thousand twenty-two zoning resolution requires a primary residence to be constructed on urban residential lots prior to the construction or placement of accessory structures as shops. However, since the applicant was permitted to build this structure in two thousand and twelve, staff has no objection to the vacation and replat due to the presence of the shop on Lot One. However, it'll be noted that no extension, enlargement, expansion of the shop will be permitted, nor will any additional accessory structures be permitted on Lot One without first the presence of a residential structure. Criteria number two is subdivision is in conformance with the general provisions of Chapter One and subdivision design standards, Chapter Seven. The standard is met. The C V Nelson addition major subdivision is in conformance with both the general provisions and the subdivision design standards. Criteria three is in regards to water, and insufficient water supply. And criteria four is in regards to sewage, as these are both part of the ISD. Those items have been met. Criteria five, the applicant has provided evidence to show all areas may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards or requiring special precautions have been identified by the applicant, and proposed uses of the area are compatible with such use. The Natrona County Conservation District recommendations for this area is that due to soil and slope development, if any development should be overseen by professionals and with the guidance of Natrona County. Second, there is a body of water within the flat, and care should be taken to minimize excess erosion and debris during any construction. Third, was any excess sediment in the natural drainage should be removed to minimize potential flood. Lastly, the Natrona County Conservation District notes that there is no frequency of flooding our pondings in this area. Criteria six is necessary services, including fire, police, school, recreation, utilities, open space, transportation. The C V Nelson subdivision is within the Natrona County shared jurisdiction and requires no new services. Criteria seven is compatibility with surrounding areas, that it not be detrimental to the future development of the area, and not detrimental to the health, safety, welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. The C V Nelson uses will remain urban residential. There is no detriment to the health, safety, and general welfare of the inhabitants of the area and the county. Criteria eight and nine are in regards to creating an ISD and providing finances. Again, as the required services are in place, no financial guarantee is required. Planning considerations. Sorry. The planning considerations for this is the road and verges no comment on this flat. Natrona County Health Department comments, our proposed Lot Two will be required to hook into the sewer line off of smoke rise. Their second point is that there is no subject permit currently for proposed Lot One and that structure. Distances from the sewer line may be further than three hundred feet, so hooking onto that public sewer may be cost prohibitive. A two oh one facilities planning area review will be necessary from the Health Department to determine feasibility of hooking into the sewer line. Installation of subject system on that proposed Lot One may not be possible due to lot dimensions required setbacks from surface water, lot lines, and existing easements. Skyline Ranches ISD has no comments. Westland Park ISD, initially when Mr. Chase met with staff, he did not provide any written comments, but verbally stated that if Lot Two remained in Westland Park, he didn't see an issue. Then we have an email on nine eighteen to planning staff that Mr. Chase opposed the vacation and replat for the C V Nelson, and you have that email at your seat. The City of Kaffir Planning Department also reviewed the flat and had no comments. As of the date of this report, staff has received actually four written comments. We have the comments from that decision that came both on ten three and eleven twenty-eight, both in a personal email and in an email address as, as, and to neighbors. And that one came again on ten three and eleven twenty-eight. On twelve three, a communication from Amanda Nelson was received. And just this week, we've received another from Vicky Nelson, and you have that packet at your seat. We sent notices to twenty neighbors in the area. Staff proposes with the Planning and Zoning Commission enter a motion and vote to recommend either approval or denial of the requested C V Nelson addition major subdivision. Should the Planning and Zoning Commission vote to approve the requested major subdivision, staff has no additional comments, which is proud of. Staff also. Staff also recommends that the motion incorporate all reference to the findings of staff set forth.
Any questions for, any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, I just have one question, just something to clear up, and that's criteria number four. Staff noted that, I believe it was Natrona County Health Department had comments on Lot number one and that the distance sewer lines to Lot number one may be further than 300 feet and that there is a, you said, I think a 201 facilities planning area review might be necessary. And I just have a question, does that conflict in any way with criteria four that you had mentioned, that was mentioned by staff in terms of those criteria needing to be all met for the subdivision to go forward?
So when it comes to being able to provide it, it is up to the developer to develop that area, so they have access to it. It may be more difficult than Lot 2, but it is up to working with the Health Department on finding a solution and investing the necessary funds to make that connection.
Right, anything from you?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just one quick question. So in your staff report, you state that Skyline Ranches, Lot 1 is in Skyline Ranch and Lot 2 is in Westland Park. And then there was an email contrary to that, which, which one would do we go by?
So from the ISD information that I have been provided through the Elections Office of the clerk, Lot 1 is listed in Skyline Ranches, proposed Lot 1, and proposed Lot 2 would remain in Westland Park due to the boundary line of the ISD.
So there's no change, basically?
No.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Kirsty, I have a question that follows up Chad's question. The issue of possible sanitary sewer service for Lot 1 and that, in that warehouse looking building, I was noticing that on the, on the east side of proposed Lot 1 is a utility easement, which I would assume you can have, if you wanted to and met DEQ's criteria, you could have both water and sewer. But I did not, but on the south side that would tie into Smoke Rise, it only says 30 foot water line easement. Is there a reason there's no sanitary sewer, why that's not called sanitary sewer as well? There you are.
Still on the
I can point it out if you need. And maybe we need an applicant come up and explain what they're thinking is as well.
We have a 30 foot easement on the east side.
All right. It says utility, so I would assume that could be water, sewer, whatever. But on the south line, it says 30 feet water line easement, does not include sanitary sewer. I was wondering why not? If somehow you could get a pump system from Lot 1 over to Smoke Rise to save some trouble, why wouldn't you put that on the plat? Just call it a utility easement.
Do you have an answer for that right now?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, at this time is when we have the applicant come up and maybe fill us in on some details that the commission might want to know in reference to consideration of the, of the item. So with that, anyone representing the Nelsens, if you would please come, come forward?
Good evening. Bill Faringer, Civil Engineer, Confessions, 60 CEPI, Interpreters Drive. I had prepared the plat for this, this replat. And as the staff report indicated, these lots right now are both sold for residential use and for some reason not changed, continue to be used for residential use. To Mr. Chairman, to your question about the water line, it's been on solid, solid in this plat. That's an existing water line easement from previous plats. And there is a, there is a water main that runs through that, that easements right now connect with Skyline and Westland Park. So that's the reason it's not labeled as a sanitary sewer line, also because it's a previous easement that was dedicated to water.
It seems I read somewhere in the, in the packet that you couldn't get sewer to the cul-de-sac to the north on Lot 1?
And, and that, I believe there's, there's some issue with that. And that's why this sewer line was all designed to connect with Mr. Nelson's house, which is just north of this Lot 1. Their, their line, I think it runs, runs out a different direction from here. So right now is, you know, this Lot 1, and that's part of the reason why it's drying shop out there. They have no intention of bringing anything in it.
Okay.
Time comes that if somebody does purchase this, it's, it's going to build a residence on it. Again, they can probably figure something out as far as pumps, septic pumps, or whatever that they've got in several places along Westland Park, which is right now. One of the things I was trying to mention, I remember in the last, last hearing, there was discussion on the slope of Lot 2 and that putting a
Thank you. Putting a residential structure on this lot, they wouldn't be able to get sewer. Again, that's, that's easily remedied in the fact that there's already a number of structures down along the river, houses along the river in Westland Park, Red Bull Village, Improvement District that have septic pumps. And these, these are pumps that are sitting in their septic tanks and then the, the pump run on a float system and they pump out to the sewer line out in the street. That could be done on here. Also, you could probably from a ground level floor on this, on this Lot 2 can run gravity out to the street. And then a basement, bathroom or bathroom in the basement can have a, just a pump, just enough to pick it up and run it out. None of this is, is that unusual. Done these all over the county and the how, and the town. Lot 2 is a, it's got a nice decent slope to it back toward the creek. And that is not an issue either. It'll all depend on somebody with some imagination that wants to put a house in here. You can have a really nice walkout on the top out to Smoke Rise and then a walkout basement out the back to the, to the creek. We've kind of looked at some of these grades and just kind of played with it a little. And so, you know, that could work very well. The, the plat meets all the requirements for the county, the county ordinances. So we'd like a, to get a do pass recommendation. But right now, if you have any questions, I would be happy to try and answer them.
Questions for Mr. Faringer? Mr. Faringer, I guess my only, that's what you were talking about, those septic tank affluent, fluent, affluent lines. I was thinking from Lot 1 to Smoke Rise, you might add the utility easement that would allow an affluent line to get to
We, we can do that?
Lot 1 off through Lot 2.
And it's, and I'm not positive how it works in the district. I believe that that would be owned by the homeowner out to the, out to the sewer line. The affluent pub would be owned by the homeowner, but I'm, but I'm not, I could, I can check on that and make sure
I'm saying just a way to get from Lot 1 to
Oh, I see what you're saying, Lot 1 to Lot 2.
Lot 1 to the sewer in Smoke Rise.
Okay. I can, I can check on how that, how the district handles those down along the river and see what they've got there.
So simplistically, it would be a, it'd be an easement across Lot 2.
The, the question there is, is where do we put it? That, that will accommodate the house. So sure, I understand, I will look at that. I would like the opportunity to respond to some of the comments that will come later at the end of this, if possible.
We will provide rebuttal time for you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we ready to move into the public hearing part? Are, are you?
Amanda Nelson, I'm in support.
Okay, I, let me, if, if you have anything different to tell us from what Mr. Faringer did, otherwise we need to go into a special public hearing and you'll have your chance to come up and, and voice support. But if you, if you have technical stuff you want to tell us about, okay, all right, okay. All right. So at this time, I would like to call a public hearing for the consideration of MS 23-3, and that's what we've been talking about with the request from Carl and Vicki Nelson for approval of the CB Nelson addition. I would ask that any of those addressing the commission, please clearly state your name and address as you come forward to the podium, please. And again, would like to hold everyone to five minutes, please. Actually got a, got a timer here, so. At this time, we'd like to invite any of those who'd like to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. And you could have stood there, you didn't have to go back.
Okay, so my name's Amanda Nelson, I reside at 4192 Cabin Creek Road. My property is not directly in contact with the property subject, but we're just north of the Nelson's residential property. So I, I just, I already also submitted a letter to you kind of with my position, and I think the most important thing is part of our rights as citizens, as property owners, is the ability to decide whether we want to maintain our property, sell our property, gift our property. And obviously, that's not an absolute right, because you as the government have requirements to ensure that our use of that property is safe and protected for the citizens around it. You set forth specific guidelines that must be met, criteria that must be met to ensure that the use of property is appropriate and in compliance with what is safe for the general public. And in this particular proposal, all of that criteria has been met. The only exception is with criteria number five, and that was just with the recommendation that professionals be utilized in the event to ensure erosion, things like that aren't, aren't an issue. I think with the presence of a civil engineer here who is helping put together this proposal and ensure that it is usable, it's, it's actually going to be doable for the Nelsens. I think it's clear that they have no hesitation to call in additional experts to ensure that what they're doing is adequate. I think as a neighborhood, there has been a lot of kind of thrown out misinformation and misrepresentation of what is happening. I find it very difficult to believe that as a commission, you would just approve a plat change that would take away somebody's rights, that would cancel out easements that are already put into place. And that's kind of what has been spread through the neighborhood, that those property lines are unfairly being moved, that easements are no longer going to be in existence. And I think that's just inaccurate. I think as a commission, you have more authority and probably more integrity than that to make sure that those things aren't happening. I think a lot of the opposition to this proposal is based in a personal realm of dislike of certain individuals in the neighborhood. And the ability to kind of spread that misinformation has turned into a little bit of everyone jump on the bandwagon and that fear of what's going to happen next. I think that any question that you ask of the applicants can be answered to show that they are not doing this and an intention to harm anyone else, to take away anyone else's rights or use or access to property. It's simply what their desire is to move forward with that property. And I think the criteria that you've set forth has been met, and that should be the number one obligation.
Thank you. Question, one moment, please. Questions for Ms. Nelson? Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, would you please come forward? Hello?
Good evening, my name is Vicki Nelson, and I reside at 4252 Cabin Creek Road. First, I'd like to respond back to the reasons given for opposition. I won't read the actual opposition because I'm only allowed five minutes, so. Number one, to remove these two lots from the Westland Park subdivision, oh, sorry, now I'm reading it. Little nervous, sorry.
You're fine.
This is one lot we are talking about, not two for the end results. Yes, we're talking about the 4260 and the Bunner Simple lot. But when we're all done, it would be, the Westland Park would have one lot and the Skyline Road would have one lot. As I said, the Bunner Simple lot 2 on the west side will become one lot and would stay in the Westland Park subdivision. The dues are the same price annually for everyone and are not based on the size of the lot. So the owner of the subdivided west side Bunner Simple lot 2 would pay the same as everyone in the HOA. So how would that cost $10,000 if they're paying the same as everybody else? The owner of the lot would also be responsible paying future maintenance and improvement projects, just like the rest of the owners of, of the area. Number two, the shop, it is a shop, it's not a warehouse, it houses cars, grandkids, bicycles, that kind of stuff, and that's why it's dry. The shop was built in 2012 or 11 years ago. A civil engineer was involved and no easements were encroached on. As far as a comment about Black Hills, that's not true. Black Hills was given a free rein to the CB Nelson property to do their work. They went back and forth without any delays on the, to the back corner of the property. Never once did they say we delayed anything. They have access all over that area. Number three, at the, at this point, we are only considering subdividing a piece of land that has steep banks and a creek running between them and does not allow for vehicle access between them without crossing other property. I have not seen any restrictions or covenants that say if someone wants to build on it, they can't. As far as the lot size is concerned, you can go across the highway on Aster Street, and some lots have the backyard that's the size of a small park, while the neighbors behind them have one that's a quarter of a size. According to the civil engineer, the property is large enough to build a house on it if someone chooses to do so in the future. And number four, yes, Carl accessed the property, but only once with a lowby semi-trailer to clean up junk buildings that the former owner had for his horses. By doing this, he cleaned up the property for the neighbors and made it easier to keep the lot mowed to help with fire control. The casual use of the lawnmower in the summer months does not constitute consistent erosion of the road. A garbage truck or UPS delivery truck causes more harm going up and down the road than the mower does. As co-owners of Bunner Simple Lot 2, and because we have met the requirements necessary to subdivide the lot, Carl and I would like to express our support for MS 23-3, the CB Nelson addition replat. We purchased the Bunner Simple Lot 2 in 2012. We purchased the Bunner Simple Lot Two in twenty-twelve. The reason we want to subdivide the lot is the current property line does not allow for a vehicle to cross from the east side to the west side of the property because of the creek and steep embankment, which is about twenty to thirty feet steep on both sides. See the attached photos that she presented to you. The only way to access the east side of the lot with a vehicle is to drive through our forty-two sixty Cabin Creek property. Joining the east side of the Bunner Simple Lot Two property to the forty-two sixty property makes sense because it makes one continuous property, which you probably saw in the pictures. Having a Bunner Simple Lot Two east side join to the forty-two sixty Cabin Creek property also allows us to preserve our view of the mountains. The view was one of the reasons we purchased our home here twenty-eight years ago. What is relevant is that Carl and I, along with the help of a civil engineer, have met the requirements set down by the county to subdivide the property. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Nelson? Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, would you please come forward?
Hello, I'm Carl Nelson, forty-two fifty-two Cabin Creek Road. First, I want to say this. You guys are all volunteers. I get that. Nobody should bash on you guys for any decisions here whatsoever. I was asked a while back if I wanted to apply for an empty position on this board, and my comment to Mr. Feringer was, oh, hell no. So, um, I am requesting that you approve of this subdivision for us. It is not accessible, um, no matter how you look at it. I think a bridge was brought up at the last meeting. Um, that's not possible. I do think it's not up to a neighbor to decide whether or not a slope is too slopy, too deep, whatever, especially when I've done the work to hire a professional to tell me what is proper and what is not. So I will go by what he says, and, uh, I don't see any reason for it to get declined at this point. If it, if it is, I'll go to the county commission meeting with my attorney, so. Anyway, um, as far as, uh, sewer, um, our sewer for forty-two fifty-two Cabin Creek Road, um, is accessible, um, and cleaned by Westland Park. Uh, there is no sewer on that side of Cabin Creek Road that is managed by Skyline Ranches. So we're kind of on that borderline where one does and the other one doesn't. So, um, Ed Chase does a great job keeping that cleaned out, and, and I applaud him for that, so. But, um, uh, my son's house right below us, all that sewer just runs right in a straight line down that side over there, so. As far as the, um, uh, the other lot over there, um, for Smoke Rise Road, the sewer is deeper, but it is just right outside the lot line. Um, and like Bill told you guys, every day there is grinders and pump systems that pump into sewers from homes. Um, it's very common, so. You guys do this every day. I'm sure you've heard of that, so. I don't think I have anything else to say, other than we appreciate your consideration. Any questions? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, would you please come forward? Hi there.
Eric Nelson, forty-one ninety-two Cabin Creek Road. And I just wanted to simply come up and say that I'm for it, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? No one else in favor? At this time, I'd like to invite those who would like to speak in opposition to the application, would you please come forward?
Good evening. My name is Matt Hayston. I'm at four-three-four-seven Smoke Rise Road. Want to thank you for your time. And my opposition initially started back in October. There was misinformation. I will acknowledge that. We did not understand what the planning commission was looking to do with these two lots. But, uh, through the process of trial and error and many, um, opportunities to see what's going on, we do have a refined, um, stance in opposition to this, uh, replat. The first opposition has been original since the beginning. The proposed lot replat is not consistent, particularly with lot two, which is now the Bunner Simple. And how Westland Park was planned and established as a community in the nineteen-seventies, the lot size that is being proposed is half of an acre, whereas all of the neighbors around me on Smoke Rise have over an acre. Um, we would like to see the replat not happen because that would be an inconsistent lot size with how our neighborhood is currently laid out. The proposed lot one, I have a question for the planning commission. When did that pull out of Westland Park ISD and become part of Skyline Ranch's ISD? Because the former owner of my property owned all of that up until the early twenty-teens, twenty-twelve timeframe. And we're all confused about when that would have been pulled into Skyline Ranches because originally all of that was Westland Park. Um, so that is one question we do have. Third, there is no easement consideration for the electric line servicing my property at four-three-four-seven Smoke Rise in the proposed replat. And should a permanent structure be established over that line, it could jeopardize the electric service to my house at some point in time. Third, uh, there, um, under chapter four, section five, criteria one for the approval of the Nelson replat has already been viol, been violated. If you will go to the picture that I submitted in an email, you can see a pole barn structure that is a second structure on that property already. So we've already violated criteria one. It currently houses tanks, trailers, and whatever else is parked over there, so. That would be a concern from my behalf is that we've already got criteria that's been violated in this. I don't know if you can pull up that picture that I have of the pole barn next to the, um, dry barn on the Nelson's property. Christie, it's in the packet.
Christie, can you do it, or do you want to?
I can pull it up on my cell phone if that's needed, and I can show you guys on my cell phone. It's in the packet.
And commissioners, it should be included in the packet that you have.
So in this picture, right here, I can show real quick where we've got a pole barn established on the property already, which would violate criteria one. In addition to that violation, um, my concern with the easements comes in because his driveway materials that are on lot one have been pushed over my property line, elevating my property, um, by four to five feet. So he's already proven that he will push boundaries. And I want to make sure that any future development, you know, there isn't any more of these discrepancies where um, building materials get pushed onto my property and aren't removed. I would say, um, you know, it's nothing personal. It's business. Um, I do want to see the future of my family preserved. We bought into this neighborhood for similar reasons that the Nelsons did. Um, we very much like where we live, and, um, you know, if there's a dislike, then, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it is what it is, and I'm not going to further any, you know, comment to any personal matter. It's, uh, business, and I just want to see the integrity and feel of Westland Park preserved as it is now. I think that's about all I've got for now, but I thank you for your time, and, you know, if there's any, you know, questions, feel free to ask.
Questions for Mr. Hastings?
Just one question. Um, when was the picture taken of the, of this, the structure that you're, you're referencing? I don't, it, it may be on here. I just don't see it.
Um, that structure was taken, I believe, back in October timeframe.
Okay.
I forwarded it in the email that I originally sent, so, um, I can pull it up on this phone if you need me to verify that right now.
That's okay. I'm just.
But it's, it's a recent, in the last month type of picture, or two months. And I can verify that it is still there today.
Mr. Hastings, which, which is your property? Can you, can you describe it to us? You're on the east side, right? Correct?
No, we're going to be on. This is my house right here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions? Don't see any now. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition, would you please come forward?
I'm Edward Chase. I reside at sixty-seven oh-two Terrace Drive, Casper, Wyoming eight-two-six-zero-four. You're probably wondering why am I up here when in fact the, I live about four blocks from this property in, on Terrace Drive. But I am part of the membership of the Improvement and Service District. I'm chairman of that district, and I have been on that district for probably over twenty-five years. And been chairman all that time, except for when it first was initially established. I believe that the property in question ought to remain as a horse pasture. There used to be a horse barn there, and the horses ran on them lots. I don't understand when he, all these lots are owned by the applicants, and they could do what they want as far as setting up to have room for getting the grass and other things harvested with horses. Also, I fail to understand, there's a for sale sign out there, how that, and access to the property that it goes by because it's a steep access. So, in my opinion, I'm not sure how that's going to be resolved. Also, I have the opinion that probably the planning committee would reject the proposal to develop a housing unit on the lot that is, in my opinion, way too small for a house to be established. And I do not believe that it'd be authorized to have a trailer home there either. I think that's probably against the rules. Also, to the, uh, sewer thing's been talked about. You could put in a pump system and pump the sewer up to the main line, and then it'd go down the main line. And of course, we have other properties that have the same system, pump system. So that's how that would work. So I really believe that the, there is no need to change the size of the lots. They ought to remain as initially established when they were put out there in nineteen-seventy-four. And they've been that way ever since. No reason to have them subdivided or changed. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chase.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application, would you please come forward?
Hello?
Hi. My name is Tiffany Hayston. I live at four-three-four-seven Smoke Rise Road, eight-two-six-zero-four. Hold on. I got a frog in my throat. First off, I'd like to say, um, the Nelsons have every right for their property. I mean, we're full, that is not why we're here. Why we're here today is we want to preserve the integrity of our neighborhood. Every acre out there, every home site looks similar. The difference with this lot is it's super steep. It slopes down to the creek, which does feed into the north plat. You can act, you can actually walk across the creek to the other side. Mr. Nelson has actually done that multiple times from his side. Um, he has accessed the lot, um, just by walking across the creek. Um, it's not a full-running cle, creek, um, but, so it's not like a major river. Um, it floods and occasionally during the snowmelt. So the main thing is we want to preserve for whoever buys this lot. We want them to have the same type of feel as everybody else in the neighborhood does. And we want to preserve that for them. I know that sounds strange, but that is actually our main intent. Speaking from the things that we do have some issues with and some concerns is Mr. Nelson has in the past have some things that go over property lines. Um, he has, sometimes he doesn't know where his property lines are at times. So those are some things we have concerns about because we don't want that to happen with this property. And that's just the major thing we're most concerned about. We really haven't even been told how it will necessarily affect us. It's just, we see it, and that's, you know, what we want. So I'm not, I'm against this. So I know there's probably not very many questions, except if you've gone out there, you've seen the slope, um, you've seen the creek. Any type of environmental things would be concerning because it does access the north plat, um, the creek that runs. It's the yellow line, the little squiggly one.
Questions for Ms. Hayston? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application, would you please come forward? Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition, would you please come forward? Seeing none? Like to call, um, an end to the, and now declare the public here, meeting closed. I want to thank everyone for sharing your thoughts, and, um, you know, we heard from the public on the pro side that, um, basically that's. on the pro side that basically it's property that is hoped to be used however they would like to use it and I'm hearing in opposition that the feel of the neighborhood and integrity of the neighborhood is felt in is going to be harmed, some other things as well. So Mr. Farragut, I believe you'd asked for some rebuttal time would you please come forward if there's anything you'd like to for us to know about?
Thank you for the opportunity. Really the only thing the biggest biggest concern that you know some of the neighbors have is the size of the lot. And just about four lots south of here, there's several lots that are the same size or you write around a half an acre. So it's not like there's no half acre lots in this area. This is this is not the only one, there are several of them just south of here, not that far. And the the extra structure that the first gentleman was talking about according to Carl it's old metal shed he took off of a different lot and it's it's on his parcel but it's not being used for anything and he agrees he a neighbor is supposed to or a friend is supposed to come and dismantle it and take it apart but it hasn't happened. And so and I know it's been there for a while but he's it's supposed to be going away but it's it's not a building that's being used for anything. So that's really really all I need to say. For the the power line easement that he was talking about, I believe the power line probably goes down the road, there's a easement along the roadway there. I believe but I'll if there if there's a power line that goes across this corner that there's a concern about being damaged during construction of a residence, we can certainly take a look at that and put an easement on here or something for for that purpose if we need to protect that power line. So what I'm thinking might do is is get the have a utility locate done on the property and see if there's any any issues with any power lines or anything that are too far out or maybe a concern and if there is a concern we can we can add an easement to this parcel.
Okay.
So with that, I think that's it's really all the comment that I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Farragut?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving forward commissioners, any discussion? If there's no discussion, the chair would entertain a motion for consideration?
I move that we we vote for approval of this of this replat and just want to get this right for the vacation and the replat.
I think there's some standard wording in the.
Is there?
You're right, you're right.
And Mr. Chair, there is not that language in there at this time I think. We we elected to take that language out because I think the board needs to make their own motion.
Okay.
As for the wording and how you want to make any type of motion whether to approve or deny, one thing that you do need to include is some specific findings as to the reason why you were moving to approve or deny.
For instance?
Such as whether the conditions have been met or whether they haven't been met.
Those nine criteria?
Yes.
Is that what you're referring to?
Okay.
Okay. So I move that we we approve the vacation and the replat based on I think the those nine criteria have been met. And I think we should include the the findings as they are included in the in the packet. I think that's I think that's it.
Would you add anything about the electrical service?
Good point, I think we should add something in there about the electrical easement for the adjoining lot that was mentioned earlier in terms of any any potential issues if that lot was built on lot number lot number two.
Furthermore, would it be acceptable to have a sanitary sewer easement shown as we talked about earlier for service?
Sure.
From lot one across lot two?
Okay, let's do let's add that, yep.
Okay. All right, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Could you read back the motion to us?
If you wish, sure.
Okay, I'll try to try to simplify it from the first one. The motion was to to accept as described here in our packet that the nine criteria have been met but to include the assessing whether or not there's electrical easement that needs to be considered for the adjoining lot and also an easement from lot one to lot two that would incorporate a sewer line going into the Bunnery Simple subdivision if I if I got that right. Is that is that everything?
Makes sense to me.
Mr. Chair, I believe that the only other addition to the original motion was that the findings of fact were also incorporated.
Right. There you go. Agreed?
Agreed.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I don't I don't know that it's further discussion but I want to kind of reiterate what the motion states. You know, we looked through all of the different criteria, it seems like this applicant has met those and it seems like it's our duty to follow that according to the rules the way they're established and for that reason I will be voting in favor of the motion.
You know, I certainly understand the folks that are here tonight and understand their perspective when it comes to the look and feel of the community. I know that's difficult but we do have to consider the the rights of the landowners and we do have the criteria that were set before us here and so that's what I'm looking at. So you know, looking at it that way, I I would agree that that I would be approving I would I would approve this replat and vacation.
Likewise, I'm I've been sitting up here for 10 plus years and I think if you'd follow my voting history over those 10 years plus, I really if it meets the criteria and the people are paying taxes on the property and you don't like the way they do their business, go buy the property from them, go make them an offer they can't refuse. So with that in mind, I intend to vote for the for approval of the of the application. All right, without further ado, all those in favor of of MS 23-3 approval and that is that is the CB Nelson addition signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye and none opposed? The item is being is passed three to zero and will be before the Board of County Commissioners January 2nd, 2024. You believe that's already on top of us. All right, thank you for those that that came for that for that application. Moving on in our agenda, consideration of ZC 23-2, that's a request by Ryan Winger for a zone change from the commercial zoning district to light industrial zoning district. The property is located at 3289 Mile Road, five miles in the in part of the south half of the north of the part of the south half of the southeast of the northeast, section 25, township 24, Range 81 West, the sixth principal meridian in Neptre County. Kristi, do we have a staff report please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're right, this is a review of case ZC 23-2 for the address of 3289 Mile Road. The applicant is proposing a zone change from commercial to light industrial. The lot is five acres, the property is located on 9 Mile Road just south of the intersection of Ferris Road approximately one and a half miles south of the intersection of US Highway 2026 and 9 Mile. The current zoning is commercial, the minimum lot size is one half acre with public water and sewer and a half two acres with private sewer. The property is vacant with an abandoned mobile home and building debris. Adjacent uses to the north are light industrial, to the south are urban agricultural, to the east is the airport PUD and to the west is more light industrial. The water source here would be well or cistern and a private septic. So on the application, the applicant provided the following following statement for their zone change is we are wanting to comply with the Neptre County ordinances. We would like to build a 2,400 20 yeah 2,400 square foot shop to rent to a mechanic that restores Toyota pickups and SUVs. In order to comply with the ordinances, we need a zone change from commercial to light industrial. Our neighbor zones are light industrial and urban ag, therefore the change would be beneficial to this area. So here's a little closer up, they as you can tell this little piece of commercial is its own little spot out in this area. Little bit closer up, again, this is the land aerial view of this area and that would be the debris that is currently on the lot. And it is adjacent to the Pioneer Water District. However, it is quite a distance from a hookup so it would take it would take quite a bit but you are adjacent to that. For planning considerations, the 2022 zoning resolution states the approval criteria for a zone change is whether or not it is consistent with the purpose and organization of the zoning resolution. Is it consistent with the Neptre County Development Plan? Is it necessary to address a changing area or change in conditions, our public necessity? And is it consistent with other adopted county resolutions? The subject parcel is five acres. The minimum acreage for light industrial is that one half acre with public sewer and two acres with private sewer. The subject parcel meets the 2022 zoning resolution requirements with that minimum lot size for light industrial. This property is located just outside of the growth management area defined in chapter six of the 2016 development plan. It is called Area F, the Casper Canal Rural Planning Area. The development plan does recommend agricultural and low density residential for this rural planning area. However, I believe that the historic the history of this parcel is is unique. The staff located the parcel's original zone change resolution from 1980 where it changed it from light industrial to a rural business zone which then threw out the different renditions of our zoning resolution in 2002, rural business became identified as commercial. The zone change in 1980 had to do with that 10 mile industrial park area that that majority of that area that you saw was zoned light industrial. That zone change application intent had the intent for a mobile home park but that was never established and over the last many years, it has just sat and changed as the the zoning resolution and zone map changed. So again, it's the zone the sole parcel that is zoned commercial in that area, the surrounding 400 acres to the north are all light industrial and the vast acreages to the south are all urban ag. The request to change the zone to light industrial for the purpose of that auto repair and heavy use is supported by the by staff. The request to zone the property to light industrial again is is not a recommendation for this Earl planning rural planning area in the development plan but that development plan does not address the amount of acreage that's out there that is light industrial. So throughout all of our development plans, that piece has not been identified or addressed. So it's not been critically evaluated through those updates from 1983 to the 2000 where it got the commercial use applied to it. This parcel does land within what we call the navigation easement area. So the applicant has worked with the airport and they have agreed I believe or negotiations to sign that navigation easement. That easement allows the airport to control what can be built, how high it can be built, what kind of uses you can have and so the there's no opposition from the airport in regards to the zone change. So the finding of fact is that the zone change for the industrial although not recommended by the 2016 development plan is not detrimental to the character or nature of the area and will support uses compatible with the surrounding area as it is contiguous to the property already zoned light industrial. As of the date of the staff report, there have been no written comments received. Staff sent notices to the five adjacent property owners. Planning and zoning commission may approve the requested zone change after consideration of may approve or deny after the requested zone change after consideration of public testimony and facts of the case as presented during the public hearing. After consideration of any relevant factors and upon finding that the request is keeping with the 2022 zoning resolution, staff proposes the planning and zoning commission either enter a motion to vote recommend approval or denial for the request of zone change from commercial to light industrial. Should planning and zoning commission vote to approve the requested zone change, staff recommends the inclusion of the one condition that we collect we we work with the airport board and the trustees on that agreement for future development criteria and limitations in that airport overlay. Staff also recommendation recommends that the motion incorporate by reference all finding of fact set forth and I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Turner?
Mr. Chair, I just have one question, is that 9 Mile Road a public road?
I had the same question, you go through there and it's got that sign.
Mr. Chair, I don't have a direct answer for that tonight.
If I yeah, that really wouldn't have an impact on whether we approve or deny the request for this, it was just a question in general but that's fine.
Mr. Chair, I had the I had the same question and and just whether or not it would it factors into any decision making that we would have here. I I don't think it would, I think that's up to the to the owner but I was just curious to kind of have the same question. I was same I went out there and I saw that sign and you know dealing with access issues on our own property, I know it can be a problem so I'm just curious.
I was suspicious whether somebody had planted the sign there without authorization. So as you just as you pass where Teton Homes used to be, go across that cattle guard, there's a sign there, something that gives you the impression it's a private road. I don't know. Might want to check that out one day.
Mr. Chair, I will definitely look into it and I can get back. Mr. Chair, I will definitely look into it, and I can get back to you with another answer or have one prepared for the board.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions, any other questions for Ms. Turner? Thank you. If the applicant is in the audience and would like to come forward and fill us in on any details we might need to know, we would appreciate that.
I don't have many details. We're gonna, we did up it to, I, I believe, a 4,800 square foot shop.
Give us your name and address, please.
Ryan Winger, 560 Seminole.
Okay, thank you. Could you start over again? I guess I was a little distracted.
Yep, yep.
Good.
Uh, so I do have the thing for the airport signed for you guys, whoever wants that.
That's the agreement that we were talking about?
Yeah. And then we have decided to put a 4,800 square foot shop instead of the 2,400 square foot shop.
Okay. That shouldn't have anything to do with the zone change, should it, Christie?
No.
Okay.
That's all I got.
As far as, um, as far as utilities out there, water and sewer, I'm assuming you're just gonna haul water and have a porta potty or what?
There, and there's, there's a, there's a sewer there.
Is there?
Um, it, it wasn't put in but 2004, so it's not that old.
Wow, okay. I didn't realize it. I noticed some manholes out there, but I thought that was an abandoned system or something. It looked like there was, but with the next application, it looks like there were, there are ponds out there that I.
There, there is a little pond and, yeah.
Strange looking deal, but.
Like irrigation kind of thing, but just a run and crick.
We do have the okay from DEQ and Health Department, though, on this, or have they weighed in, Christie?
So, Mr. Chair, the Conservation District had no comments on this, the Health Department had no comments on this, and Roden Bridge had no comments on this case.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anything else?
That's all I, you guys have anything? Thank you. All right, time to move into the public hearing portion of this application. This is to call the public hearing open for the consideration of zoning change 23-2, and that is the request from Ryan, Ryan Winger for a zone change from commercial zoning district to light industrial for the property that we've been discussing here. So at this time, if you're in favor of the application, would you please come forward?
Hello.
Hi.
Stephen Holbrook, 3,100 Saratoga Road. Uh, wanted to clarify, one, the Pioneer Water is out there. Have checked with that one, so will be able to tap into that line and then septic system with that, uh, but would also like to just say that I'm for it.
You don't?
Uh, would like to just say that I am for the zone change.
Great, great. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Would you please come forward? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, please come forward? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application, would you please come forward? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none? This is to conclude the public hearing on ZC 23-2, and would like to open the discussion and see if the board has a motion for consideration.
So after consideration of relevant factors and upon finding the request is in keeping with the 2022 zoning resolution, I move that we recommend approval of the requested zone change from commercial to light industrial with the one condition as presented by the staff, that the applicant work with the airport board of trustees and airport manager on agreement for future development criteria and limitations of use as outlined in the airport overlay.
Do we want to also include the finding of the fact, finding of the facts of the case as well? I mean, I can amend the motion to, I second the motion, and I'll also move to amend the motion and just add the facts of the, the case. Just rum the packet, if that's, that's correct.
Mr. Attorney, are we doing this right?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, you are doing this correctly.
Okay.
One thing we were discussing over here is that he does have that agreement. It's not an absolute, the condition isn't a necessary part of this, but if you have the, rather than reworking the motion at this point, you can approve the motion and or you can vote on the motion. If approved, then the county commissioners can just be made aware at the next meeting that that condition's been met.
Okay, I was, I saw Mr. Januska out there, assuming he had his consideration going and putting that together, so, okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none or hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none, the vote is unanimous for approval. Thank you, folks. All right, next on the agenda is consideration of another zone change, out in the same general neighborhood. And that is, this is a request by Cody Smith for a zone change from light industrial zoning district to urban ag agriculture zoning district. The property is located at 11,001 Ferris Road, and it's 20 acres and part of the west half of the southeast quarter of the northwest quarter, session 25, township 34 North, range 81 West, Six Principal Meridian, Natrona County. Ms. Turner, do we have a staff report for this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is for Zone Change 23-3, application by Cody Smith, address at 11001 Ferris Road. The zone changed from light industrial to urban ag. The property is 20 acres. It is located. There we go. It is located off of Ferris Road, about three-quarters of a mile west of the intersection of Nine Mile and Ferris Road. Again, its existing zone is light industrial. That would be that one-half acre with public sewer and two acres with private sewer. Existing land use, it is currently being used as a residence. The adjacent land uses to the north are urban ag, south is urban ag, east would be light industrial, west is urban ag. The water source is Pioneer Water and Sewer District and for both the water and the septic. The applicant did meet with staff to discuss this zone change. The current 2022 zoning resolution does not support residential uses in light industrial zoning districts. The like, the applicant would like to add an additional residence on his property for his mom. The zone change to urban agriculture would permit that additional residential use. Again, pursuant to the 2022 zoning resolution, the four criteria to, for approval is whether it is consistent with the purpose and organization of this zoning resolution. Is it consistent with the Natrona County Development Plan? Is it necessary to address changing area, change in conditions, our public necessity? And is it consistent with other adopted county resolutions? Staff's findings are that this parcel is 20 acres. The minimum acreage for urban agriculture is 10 acres, so the subject lot meets that zoning, zoning resolution requirement for the minimum lot size of urban ag. The property is located just outside the growth management area as defined in Chapter Six, in that Area F, Casper Canal Rural Planning Area. The development plan does recommend agriculture and low-density residential uses for this rural planning area. It appears a large portion of the current urban ag areas adjacent to the subject property were previously zoned light industrial. Those properties have all completed similar zone change processes over the last 30 years. The parcel is currently being used for agriculture purposes with a residence and loafing barn and shop. The surrounding 500 acres to the north and south are all urban ag, and the acreages to the east are, will remain light industrial. The request to change this zone from urban, the request to change the zone to urban agriculture for the purpose of supporting residential and agricultural uses is supported by staff. Again, the airport manager has actually been in contact with the applicant at this point, and they too are in negotiations for that navigation easement. The health, the Conservation District had no concerns. The Health Department had no comments stating that there is that existing permitted septic system on the property, and Roden Bridge did not have anything to add either. So the finding of facts, the zone change to urban ag is recommended by the 2016 Development Plan. It is not detrimental to the character or nature of the area and will support uses compatible with the surrounding area as the subject parcel is contiguous to property already zoned urban ag. At the date of the staff report, there have been no written comments received. Again, staff sent out notices to five adjacent neighbors. The Planning and Zoning Commission may approve the requested zone change after consideration of public testimony and the facts of the case as presented during the public hearing. Staff proposes that the Planning and Zoning Commission enter a motion and vote to recommend either approval or denial of the requested zone change from light industrial to urban ag. Should the Planning and Zoning Commission vote to approve the requested zone change, staff actually has the condition of working with the airport to complete that navigation easement. Staff also recommends that the motion incorporate all the findings of fact set forth. And I'll stand for questions.
Questions for Ms. Turner.
Mr. Chair, just one que, is Ferris Road a public road?
Again, Mr. Chair, I don't have that direct answer at the moment.
Just curious. I, for one, got lost trying to find this property. You gotta come at it from a couple different ways, but, yeah. Fence across the gap and all kind of stuff, so, whatever. Question I have is, so there's an existing residence on the property that I was, and I'm assuming that's grandfathered before it was zoned light industrial?
Mr. Chair, the change happened in the 2022 zoning resolution. Prior to that, I believe residences were allowed in certain light industrial areas. With the 2022 zoning resolution that we adopted, it is clearly identified as not a permitted use, and so this is currently grandfathered in, but they cannot expand, improve on, on that use without a zone change.
Okay. Makes sense. Any other questions? Thank you. At this time, we'd ask the applicant if they'd like to come up and fill us in on some details, or at least be up here ready to be in favor of, I'm assuming? Good evening.
My name's Cody Smith. I live at the residence. My mother will be up here shortly. She's currently in the process of moving, hence the reason for the zone change. I'm obviously in favor of it, 'cause love to get her out there with me. You guys got any questions for me? I know you guys had some questions about the basin that was local to it, is adjacent to me, and I did reach out to Mr. Delaney Baldwin and asked his definitions of it. He said they're pretty much just goosebumps.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Oh, that's cool. Well, thank you. Questions for Mr. Smith? All right. Thank you very much. You might want to stick around, just hang out. So at this time, like to call the public hearing for consideration of ZC 23-3, and that is for the zone change from light industrial district to urban ag district for the property at 11,001 Ferris Road. So we already heard from Mr. Smith, or unless... Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application, would you please come forward? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor? Mr. Smith, now is when you would typically come up and say, "I'm all for it," so that you can get on the record. Sorry to make you get your steps in. I'm not making you, but if you wish to speak in favor, now'd be the time to do it.
Cody Smith again. I do live at Ferris, and I approve of it. I want it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Would you please come forward? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the zone change application? Would you please come forward? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? So seeing none? Now declared a public meeting clo, the public meeting closed. Thank everyone for sharing your thoughts, and discussion from the commission. Also looking for a, looking for a motion if, if you're ready to move that way.
I don't, I don't have any questions, and I don't see any, any issues with this moving forward. So I move that the, move that the Planning and Zoning Commission vote to approve the zone change for ZC 3, ZC 23-3 from light industrial to urban agriculture, with the conditions that they coordinate or work with the airport, and that all findings of facts be included in, in the, in the case.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the zone change application. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of ZC 23-3 signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. And no opposed? So the vote is unanimous in favor to forward a do-pass recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, I'm assuming also in January. Thank you. Thank you, folks, for, for sharing your, your information on the application, so. All right, next on the agenda is conditional use permit 23-4, and that is a request by Arrow Centers and Natrona County Airport for approval of a conditional use permit, a parcel approximately one acre in a planned unit development zoning district. The parcel is located at 7844 Warner Street. Christie, do we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Chair, this is for CUP 23-4 for Arrow Centers Casper for a conditional use permit to house more than 12,000 gallons of flammable liquid.
for a conditional use permit to house more than 12,000 gallons of flammable liquid. The applicant is proposing to add a 30,000 gallon fuel tank to the fuel farm that exists out at the Casper Natrona County International Airport. This is in a planned unit development. The minimum PUD size is 80 acres and this property is currently part of the Casper Natrona County International Airport. So a planned unit development is an agreement between the landowner and the county as to the activities that can happen at, in that planned unit development area. It's much like having a mini zoning resolution that applies to just that area. So what you see in the blue is the planned unit development zone. In the planned unit development agreement between the airport and the county, they adopted the same set of standards that was included in the 2000 zoning resolution when it comes to conditional items. So through this agreement, there are uses defined as conditional uses. The airport agreement approves the process for those conditional use applications and is to forward those applications through the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners pursuant to the 2000 zoning resolution as outlined in Section Six, C, D, and E of the PUD Agreement. The Casper Natrona County Airport currently has four 30,000 gallon fuel tanks in that area designated as a fuel center and they're proposing to add that additional fifth storage tank. The criteria for approval is out of the 2000 zoning resolution, Chapter 11, Section 2D. Will granting the conditional use permit contribute to an overburdening of county services? The proposed finding of facts is there'll be no overburdening of county services by allowing the 30,000 gallon fuel tank at this location. The second criteria is will granting the conditional use permit not cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems? Finding of fact is there are, there are no additional parking or population densities associated with the approval of this CUP. The fuel tank is complimentary to the current use of a fuel farm. Environmental considerations for operations will be reviewed through the Casper Natrona County International Airport and the various entities that the airport coordinates with for those operations. Will granting the conditional use permit impair the use of adjacent property or alter the character of the neighborhood? The finding of fact is the current location operates as a fuel farm and the addition of another fuel tank will not alter the character or impair the use of the adjacent properties. Will granting the conditional use permit detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare? Finding of fact is the applicant will be required to operate within the standard set forth by the Casper Natrona County International Airport for public health, safety, and welfare items. Again, the conservation district had no comments. The health department had no comments. And Roden Bridge looked at the proposed fuel tank addition and did not have any additional comment. As of the date of the staff report, there have been no written comments received. We did send out public notices to 61 of the airport leases in the surrounding area. Recommendations, the Planning and Zoning Commission may approve the requested conditional use permit after considering, consideration of public testimony and the facts of the case as presented during the public hearing. If all minimum regulation standards of the 2000 zoning code are satisfied and after consideration of any relevant factors and upon finding that the request is in keeping with those four required findings listed in Chapter 11, Section 2D of the 2000 zoning resolution of Natrona County. Should Planning and Zoning Commission vote to approve the requested conditional use permit, staff has no additional conditions. And I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for Ms. Turner.
Just one clarification. What is considered an airport leasing, just from my, my understanding?
So within the airport area, they lease out different properties within the airport.
Okay.
And it would, was just the people who have those lease agreements with the airport that were notified.
Okay. But as far as what type of property, I'm just, again, it's just out of, from my, my understanding.
From what I, from what I understand, there are various different businesses and activities that the airport leases property to.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Schulte, any questions?
Conspicuous in not having submitted a comment was the Natrona County Fire Department. That name didn't come up, has it? Fire District?
So you're right, Mr. Chair. I do not have a report from the Natrona County Fire Department. I do know that they went out today with the building department to do a review of the area, but I did not get a report back from them before this meeting.
So anytime we've had, several years ago, we had a big thing out off Zero Road and Natrona County Fire District was right in the middle of that. So I'm wondering why they weren't here. So I would suggest if we are going to consider this for approval that we require the fire district's input before approval as a condition of approval before it goes to the BOCC. Okay. All right. Thank you. Would the applicant like to come give, give us a short story on?
Run down here?
Yeah, please.
Jennifer McGraw, 1229 South Spruce. I'm the manager of Arrow Centers. So we are a long of the skinny, a ground service provider for aircraft, private and commercial, like we provide fuel, ground service handling and stuff like that out there. Fixed base operators, what we are called. So we are looking at putting in an additional tank in the fuel farm and we've been diligently working and we can give you all that with the fire marshal and the county and the DEQ and the state level to get this all. Their regulations are pretty strict for what tank we could put in there. So and then, of course, the airport has our final, our final green for that. So we're just looking at putting in, opening a business out there. There's currently a single fixed base operator at the airfield. So we're just bringing another one onto the airfield.
You lost me on that last part. So I was wondering, why, why, why do you need to upsize?
So, so.
Doing more business out there or more flights or what?
Well, there's, there's actually a lot of business out there. It's pretty, the private side and commercial side, it's, there's a lot to it. I've actually worked on the airfield for 14 years now, managing the fuel farm and, and down at the other FBO. So we're just opening another one. So a little healthy competition and more places to park airplanes. So more business for Casper. So that's about short of it.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions?
Questions for Ms. McGraw? No? Thank you very much. All right, time to move into the public hearing part of this application. So I now declare a public meeting open for consideration of conditional use permit 23-4, and that's a request from Arrow Centers and Natrona County Airport for approval of a conditional use permit as we heard for the fuel storage, additional fuel storage. So anyone in favor of the application? Would you like to come up and, and share with us why you're in favor of the application?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Glenn Januska. I'm the director of the airport, excuse me. 8500 Airport Parkway. We would ask for your favorable consideration for the, the application. When we constructed the airport fuel farm back, I think, 2009, 2010 timeframe, the purpose was to have all above-ground fuel tanks or any fueling at the airport would be above-ground and would be located in one location. So when we built it, we have the four 30,000 gallon tanks. We actually built additional capacity, additional saddle for another 30,000 gallon tank. So this fits in with the, with the purpose. This is a different operator than the operator that's operating the other tanks that was contemplated in the lease agreements that we have with the two operators. So we anticipated this, this coming forward at some time in the future. So we'd ask for your favor. Mr. Chairman, you did ask a question and we have no problem with reaching out to the city fire department. I think probably part of the reason why that didn't happen is we actually have our own fire department at the airport with equipment that is specifically designed for putting out fuel fires because that's what the aircraft have, the Jet A. So we have our responding units as the first responder. We have a mutually agreement with all the other mutually agencies, county fires, the city, mills and so forth. So again, if you want to make that as a condition, that's, that's fine with us. But I think that's probably part of the reason. And Commissioner McNabb, so we have a lot of leases at the airport. A lot of the storage buildings fit within that, I think it was a thousand-foot radius that we kind of swung that arc. So that's probably most of the people where people have storage buildings that, or we lease land at the airport. We actually have about 250 lease agreements with 350 different operators at the airport.
My question was about the county fire, sorry. But I, I didn't even consider city.
I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I heard city fire, but yeah.
I may have said that, but I, my intent was county fire. And I thought it was a little off that we hadn't heard from those guys with, with the fuel application, so. Any questions for Mr. Januska? Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Would you please come forward?
Put it on record.
Yeah.
Wrong again. Just approve, you know, in favor for approving because that is the, one of the lifebloods of our business. So no tank, it's, presents a bit of an issue, so.
The name was Jennifer McGraw, correct? Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the application? Would you please come forward? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Would you come forward, please? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, now declare the public hearing closed for consideration of CUP 23-4. Any discussion among the Planning and Zoning Commissioners? Chair would entertain a motion for consideration of the application.
Getting a lot of practice tonight. Keep it going.
Doing great.
I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve the requested conditional use permit. That would be conditional use permit 23-4. Given that the four criteria that were listed have been met. One question, do we want to include the, seek input from the county fire? Okay, with the provision that, that the applicant seek input from county fire district? That's, if that's what you call it? And that all findings from the, from the, the case be included?
Findings of fact.
Findings of fact, thank you.
Okay.
Second to motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye here. So the vote is three to nothing in favor of a do-pass recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners at their January, I'm assuming, meeting, January 2024. Thank you all for, for your input on that application. And next on the agenda is, we're wrapping it up quickly, public comment. And public comment is a time when citizens may bring forth items of interest or concern that are not on the agenda. Please note that no formal action will be taken on these items during this time due to the open meeting law provision. However, they may be scheduled at a future posted agenda if action is required. So with that, anyone wishing to come forward and address the board about anything having to do with public comment? Would love to see you. Don't see, don't see many people moving this way. All right. Seeing none, as far as public comment. Staff. Christie, do you have something for us there?
I do. I have two things. One in your packet, you received information about, one of our staff is retiring. She's been with us for 17 years. And there is information in regards to activities for her retirement. The other item I have is we polled the commission and our planning and zoning training session will be held on January 23rd. It'll be at 5:30. We will meet across the hall in the development conference room. And I believe that is all I have for you tonight, unless you have questions.
Did we have a date set up some other time that got moved? I think like a month, a week or two ago, we had a date sometime in January. I thought I wrote it down.
I, I believe that's the, that's the date that shall be sent out a request and, and whether or not you were available on the 23rd or 24th.
Maybe that's what I did. I just, okay, responded.
Yep.
Okay, I got.
What, and what date did you say that is?
The 23rd.
23rd.
Is what we came out at, at 5:30.
You expecting maybe an hour or hour, hour and a half or so?
Probably about an hour, hour and a half is what I would, would state. That way we're not rushed and we can get through some, some critical items.
Of course, there's going to be fried for us there at that time of evening too.
If, if you would like to submit your request for snacks, you may.
All right. I've lost that last part. Okay. Anything else for consideration here tonight?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. The next planning and zoning meeting scheduled for January 9th, there is nothing on the agenda for that. We do have an applicant that came in, but due to the necessary requirements, that will be delayed until February.
So that means no meeting in January.
No meeting in January, on the, on the 9th. Instead, you get to come see me on the 23rd.
Perfect. All right. Anything from the Commissioners? Here, anything more? All right. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just keep it rolling. I move that we adjourn the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
So move.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned at 7:38 PM. Thank you, folks.